Hi folks, today we're gonna take a look at Jeffrey Lufman. This is a video that he did on a livestream, so it's gonna be a bit of a long one, of him going over the order of protections he was given, and his insane ramblings and rants at how they are violating his constitutional rights, and how he's going to sue them. But before we start today's video, as always, a big thank you to all of my current and new channel members and subscribers. Without all of your support, I couldn't keep the channel going, so I want to thank you all personally from the bottom of my heart. If you're new to the channel, please subscribe to the page. Leave a like and a comment because it helps me with the algorithm. Don't forget to check out my second channel, NCR Movie Network, and the podcast, The Crap Town Photo Man Power Rankings. Episode thirty-three is out right now. With all that being said, let's enjoy today's video.
Exhibit A: Order of Protection Issued Ex Part by Collinsville School District, Unit Ten, Dana Bond. Here we go. I won't get into what I had to say about it yet, because I'm gonna go over what she had to say about it. And I just gotta tell ya, looking at her work and looking at mine, I'm better than her. Right? I'm way better. And it shows. Anyway, so here we go. We got this summons protective order against me. It's important. A case has been filed against me, 250 P six one one. So this one wasn't on the docket yet, so it might still be effective. I don't know. I have one that says terminated. Let's see which one was terminated. Because they issued me two, because they screwed up the first one. I think it might be the same one. Let's check. It's like the Three Stooges. Of law. Yeah, so this one was terminated, according to the docket.
Now, I need to add some clarity and context here. The clarity is, he was issued the day before a order of protection, but they gave him the wrong copy. The following day, the sheriff's office came out to present him with the right copy, dismissing the first one that he was given. Now, this is all stemming due to an incident he had with the school district. Apparently, he had issues with them to the point where they had banned him from coming to public meetings. However, they did give him a remedy if he wished to address them at public meetings, and to still be able to be within alignment of the Constitution. They gave him a direct line to call during the meetings, and an email chain to contact the staff to address any other issues. However, he is taken to abusing that like certain frauders we have seen do before, like Lane Meyer and Craig Hendry.
Terminated the same day it was issued. Now, was that because of fumbled service? I don't know. Doesn't matter. Here we go. Alright. Mark Skirtich is the petition, but this was prepared by Dana Bond. Hopefully, they can both be charged for this. Turns out, the court finds that good cause exists for granting this remedy, regardless of prior service or process or notice upon respondent, because the harm which that remedy is intended to prevent would likely to occur if respondent were not given any prior notice or greater notice than was given of petitioner's efforts to attain judicial relief. So if we didn't get this piece of paper over to Jeff right away, he was gonna harm us, and we needed... Oh, but wait. Turns out, they just terminated it the same day. Maybe, okay, so the venue is proper. So when it says the court did... Ooh. Did you know any known violation of a stalking no contact order is a Class A misdemeanor, or second or subsequent violation is a Class Four felony? Did you guys know that? Okay. Did you know it's a felony to issue orders of protection? For no good reason? See what else we got? It is ordered that the respondent is prohibited from threatening or committing stalking personally or through third parties. Right? So I haven't been on anybody's page. I don't even know what page you guys have. But I know you're on mine. Let's see what else. That the respondent may not contact the petitioner and/or other protected persons in any way, directly, indirectly, or through third parties, including but not limited to phone, written notes, mail, email, or fax. I don't see social media on here anyway, by the way.
Even though social media is not listed on there, it might be addressed later on when it goes to court. However, the reason why they're having to issue this order of protection against Jeffrey is due to the fact that Jeffrey has been going on an ongoing campaign against the three individuals listed in this order of protection, sending multiple emails a day with vulgar and threatening-based language. Yes, he does have a First Amendment right to address his government. He does have the First Amendment right to freedom of speech. However, when that speech starts to turn violent, that's when he starts crossing the line and not being protected under the First Amendment.
That the respondent is ordered to stay a hundred feet away from the petitioner and/or other protected persons, residents, school daycare, employment, and/or other specified place. That the respondent is prohibited from entering or remaining at the petitioner's and/or other protected person's place of residence, location not disclosed, like I care where you live, place of employment, all Collinsville CUSD cussed. Cussed their asses out. School property and events wherever located. The same as the Collinsville School District. One's a public meeting that I can attend, and the other one, apparently, I'm banned wherever located. Okay, and so I live across the street from Collinsville School District property. When I'm sleeping in my bed, am I breaking this? So we got another one that was lined out. Other injunctive relief. Yo. Why? Well, because I called them out on their official misconduct. And I filed a complaint where they had already admitted to it. And so now, we're to the point where basically they tried to put this order of protection on me, so that I guess it would create a situation where I'd be in court a bunch and cause me stress. But it's your taxpayer dollars that is going toward all this stuff. And that's where it gets really sketchy, is that these public officials are using public funds to pay for their defense, and that's your money. So when they deprived me my First Amendment rights, you guys are paying the bills. How you like that?
Shenanigans. Shenanigans. And we're calling shenanigans, folks, because it's not the fact that he's calling them out on corruption that they issued this order of protection. It's the fact that he has done things and have made threats online on social media, and has emailed them in a harassing manner that's caused this. It's not them who are wasting our tax dollars. It is he who is wasting their tax dollars. He is the one causing all of this. He's the one who's issued over seventy-two emails in one day. He's the one who is constantly harassing them and making videos of harassment, and making claims in a threatening manner. This is all his doing, and it will be explained by him and shown in this video.
Law library for way, bro, way. And so I requested by Freedom of Information Act all the billing documents according that are pertaining to me, and they were redacted. But it was to the tune of nineteen thousand dollars for student issues. And the... Imagine the school board, who is actively trying to cover up the... Alright, love your family, eh, Jesus, amen. Jesus. So Jesus got a mission for me, and I'm on it. Thank you, Jesus. Anyway, so yeah, so your tax dollars, nineteen grand is what I'm guessing, because they redacted it. They redact everything because they can't be out in the open. They use attorney-client privilege, right? And so Mark Skirtich is using the school district council like it's as a personal attorney and paying with your tax dollars, right? So here, Mark Skirtich is the petitioner. Other protected people are Laura Bauer and Brad Hire. His name is Bradley. Come on, get it right. Respondent information. See description of repeated acts of harassment. Here's where it gets good, folks. Listen up. Skirtich, Bauer, and Hire versus Lufman. Harassment and violation of stalking, no contact order. Now, keep in mind, they are watching all my social media. Yeah, it's for real. So keep in mind, they're watching and hanging on every word of my social media and sent me an order of protection for stalking them. Like, I don't even know what these people look like. I've never seen Bradley Hire in real life. I've never met Brad Skirtich in real life. I've met Laura Bauer a couple times. Mr. Lufman has engaged in escalating and repeated harassing communications and videos towards Superintendent Big Money Mark Skirtich, Principal Laura Bauer, and Assistant Superintendent Brad Hire, causing extreme concern for their safety and emotional distress. These public officials, when you call them out on their official misconduct, they start feeling stressed. Yes. Well, thank you. That's very kind. Big Money Brad. Yeah, that's what his initial is B. Mark Big Money Skirtich. So on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Lufman was barred from Collinsville School District property in accordance with Illinois School Code, which they don't list because it's twenty-four twenty-four. And that's for students and employees, not citizens, which I am, right? And so they didn't list it on purpose.
Now, I couldn't find it anywhere online referencing to the twenty-four twenty-four school code that he's talking about. If you actually look up the Illinois School Code, it only goes up to a hundred and sixty-five. Now, there are different things in there that it covers. School policies when it comes to dealing with suspensions, hiring and firing teachers, school maintenance, awareness plans for safety and public health. But you were banned from the school board meetings because you were becoming hostile and threatening. They still gave you a remedy to contact them. I covered this in the first video on Jeffrey. I did. Even he admits in that video and in this video that they gave him a line of communication so he may be able to address issues at school board meetings and contact the school board about the conditions and issues that he may have for his child.
For intimidating and harassing behavior towards Bradley, Dr. Skirtich and Ms. Bauer, specifically in summary, here's where it gets so good. Alright, he sent seventy-five emails with the following aggressive and harassing language. Now, these are public officials. So to give you an analogy, if Donald Trump was sitting in the Oval Office watching CNN, and he started saying, "I don't like the way they're talking about me. FBI, get over there and shut them up. Give them an order. I need protection."
What you've just said is one of the most insanely idiotic things I have ever heard. At no point in your rambling, incoherent response were you even close to anything that could be considered a rational thought.
Right? So he sent seventy-five emails with the following aggressive and harassing language. He used vulgar language, calling himself a warrior. So that I called myself a warrior, that's vulgar, right? First of all, I've been to war four times. I've got thirty months of combat over four different tours, right? If anybody's a warrior in this world, it's me. Second of all, I graduated from Granite City High School, and we kicked the Collinsville Seahawks ass regularly. So I'm proud to be a Granite City Warrior, but that's a vulgar word to them, right? And I warned the staff how serious this is. Right now, I'm sitting out in front of the United States Circuit Court of Southern Illinois, and I've filed a federal civil rights case. I don't know if that's serious for everybody. Does that happen all the time?
Yeah, it happens all the time with frauders. They file these frivolous lawsuits because they don't have, well, the skills to actually go and be productive members of society and get actual jobs. You're trying to claim that they're saying that your usage of the words that you are a warrior is vulgar language. No, they're just saying that that's a form of intimidation. Now, the vulgar language will be addressed later on in the video, but you constantly making claims that you are a warrior can be considered a threat if you're implying that you might use force to coerce them to doing as you wish.
It sounds serious to me, but remember, this is aggressive and vulgar language. I'm curious, at this point, if any of you still have any integrity. I'm sorry if you don't like my tone when I deliver this message. Do you have any integrity, Collinsville School District Ten? I don't think so. And so you've taken all this unnecessary action to a great man and father, right? That's what I told them in an email, that they found that harassing and vulgar. And so then I go on to say, "The truth shall set you free." How does it feel? So again, I ask you and tell you, the truth will set you free. You're still gonna get held accountable. But the best thing you can do is go tell the truth, because it will set you free, because you won't have to live with all your lies for the rest of your life. You know, because you will have to think about all these things that you've done. Furthermore, I hope y'all go to fucking prison where you belong. Have I taken an oath? I've taken an oath and given an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States oh, about a thousand fucking times. I've spent twenty-two years in the military. So I've enlisted people. I've given the officer's oath.
And?
So here we go. The truth will set you free. I hope y'all go to fucking prison. I don't... I just think that you will. I think that your crimes are egregious. Wouldn't it be awesome if for some reason the police were monitoring our conversations? Telling the Collinsville Police Department to check on Dr. Skirtich because he was concerned for him. I'm totally concerned for your well-being and your soul because you're a liar. Stating that the situation is less than favorable for all involved, repeatedly referencing an investigation into Dr. Skirtich. Yeah, so check it out, Mr. I Am A Cop. Have you taken an oath to uphold the law? And so that's what the biggest part of this is, is there are a bunch of police officers that look the other way. Right? And so, "Good morning. How are you?" So you understand that as a police officer, that failing to investigate a felony is a felony, right? And so you traverse, when you know a felony has been committed, and you don't investigate, you traverse into official misconduct, right?
Now, I'm seriously wondering if Jeffrey here has actually read the misconduct laws for Illinois, or is he just parroting what other frauders have said in the past? Because I've looked at the law, and what he's saying is not applicable to the law. Nobody is intentionally or actually not performing their duties that's required by law or mandatory by their office. Nobody is intentionally obstructing for personal gain. Nobody's getting any bribes, and nobody is giving out personal information that would have piqued an ongoing investigation. Yes, if some public records were deleted by the school district, and they had prior approval from the state and the county, then that's not misconduct. And to claim that the police are not upholding their laws by not enforcing the misconduct law, how could they enforce something that's not being violated?
And so it's a serious offense. Okay, so here's the more harassing vulgar language. Referencing his mental health and questioning why Maryville University contacted him regarding behavioral health support. Stating, imagine a world where he volunteers at an elementary school to keep it safe, because my daughter goes there. I would work there for free to make sure that she's okay, because I live across the street, right? And so this is all the stuff that they have and that they need protection from me for, right? Referencing a school lesson on light and darkness, and having a conversation at lunch with his daughter about light and darkness. Calling himself a peaceful warrior. Oh my God, this guy is crazy. Asking other Collinsville School District staff members via email, "Why go down with these people?" Hey, Sergeant Barry Coleman, Ms. Barry Coleman, Latoya, "Why you going down with these people?" I say it again, you know, she was the investigator of the complaints that the principal already admitted to deleting records that were a part of my daughter's education records. And so she deleted them. I called them out on it. The investigator substantiated that indeed these records were deleted. And so now she's named on a federal case for... And then, oh, by the way, you can't have a teacher investigate crimes? So anyway, Mr. Lufman has recently started sending repeated emails to multiple federal and state agencies filing complaints with unsupported and outlandish allegations. Specifically, he has repeated that Ms. Bauer has engaged in felonious activity. Yeah, she's already admitted to it. And that is a felony by the Illinois Local Records Act for destroying public records. So if you were actually a real lawyer, you might actually reference some of this stuff. But this is gonna look great. This is exhibit A in my federal case. Thank you for sending me this. Okay, so on April eighth, Mr. Lufman has twenty-one emails with harassing allegation to district legal counsel and multiple federal and state agencies, including, but not limited to allegations of gross negligence, of student welfare, felony-level official misconduct, retaliation, destruction of protected records, and violations of federal and state laws. Yeah, absolutely. Can you believe that this lady sat here and typed all this up? And you know that she didn't send this in a vacuum, right? All them lawyers over there at their big money legal firm, they blessed off on this. And they just look stupid now. April twenty-fourth, this includes retaliation for a formal complaint, destruction of protected records, failure to evaluate my daughter for special education. And well, at least you read my emails. You just signed this confession that you read my emails, too. That you cited all the stuff I said in there. "Knowing me destroying public records in this manner is a serious violation of law. It potentially constitutes felony official misconduct under Illinois Law seven twenty ILCS five slash thirty-three dash three." It is a Class Three felony, right? And that's under the Illinois... Illinois law. That's not Illinois Local Records Act either. That's the official misconduct. Concealment of misconduct. That's what the cops and the board members did. I can't believe you put all this stuff down there. Oh, here we go. Here's a shout out to my YouTube channel. So on Monday, twenty-eight April, Mr. Lufman violated the bar notice. Now, it's a bar. It was a ban. It was a trespass. Now it's a bar, right? Bar notice. As he appeared in Collinsville School District Board of Education meeting, Mr. Lufman had previously requested to attend meetings while the bar was in effect, and Dr. Skirtich provided him a call-in number for him to be able to attend and listen in. On the morning of April twenty-eighth, Dr. Skirtich again denied Mr. Lufman physical access to the school, but provided a call-in information. Mr. Lufman still attempted to physically attend the meeting and was issued a trespassing citation by Collinsville's Police Department. And the best part about that is, is that freedom to assemble, freedom to petition. We're definitely in the First Amendment area right now. And that I submitted a demand for Skirtich's resignation, and I wanted to make sure that the school board members saw it.
Now, how did they violate your First Amendment rights? They gave you a number to call in so you could attend the meeting via telephone, so you could still address the school board with your concerns at the meeting. They did not violate your right to assemble or your right to address your government. You were given a ban from the physical meetings, but they still provided you a way to be heard, still to attend in a way that would not violate that. You chose to ignore it and got a trespassing citation for doing so.
So we have Mr. Lufman on YouTube. Jeffrey TV asserting the same harassing allegations, which include threatening language. He listens to a video. It starts the song with "The Game" by Motorhead. Yeah!
Now, I'm a huge Motorhead fan. I love Lemmy. He was one of the best bass players and lead singers out there. But due to the fact that it's so cringe, and well, I don't want to take the chance of getting a copyright strike for him horribly singing Motorhead, I don't want to take the risk, so I'm gonna cut this part out. I do apologize, but I'm saving you guys the ear bleeding issues that I had to listen to.
Mr. Lufman says it's his warm-up song, and he is warmed up and ready to go. You damn right I am. Alright, and so they start to cite the lyrics. "I am the game. You don't wanna play me?" They cited all the lyrics on there. "You're gonna die in flames." And then he says, "It's relentless. I'll never relent. The submission hole is in place. Your only question is if I tap, will he let go? Or is he gonna choke us all the way out? What's he gonna do? And man, is it looking bad for you all. Some people's in boxes are nuclear right now. It's gonna keep happening. I'm just getting warmed up." Lufman states that Principal Bauer is the reason for all of this. Ya think? Lufman states that, oh, he continued to assert that Ms. Bauer committed a felony for record destruction. He called Brad Hire a dumbass Assistant Superintendent. Okay. He is a dumbass. You know what he did? In my response to all the charges prior to their little kangaroo court, he admitted that my response, he said, "Sir, thank you for your responses. They'll be used as more evidence of your official misconduct." And that's why he's a dumbass, because he admitted to it. Okay? And you're gonna get to have your little say in court there, Bradley. On or about Saturday, April twenty-sixth, Mr. Lufman posted a video to his Instagram account with the following phrases in the heading. "When this blows open, you're not only gonna lose your job, you're gonna lose your honey buns." Yeah, baby. You be giving them honey buns up, won't you? "In federal prison, too, judgment is coming, and God is still watching." He sure is. Let's see what else. He sure is. Let's see what else. Um, so we played some more Motorhead. He's warmed up and ready to go. You know it's coming quick if to reference to Dr. Skirtich. He says Dr. Skirtich deserves it. He references Nazi Germany. Oh goodness, I can't say Nazi Germany because we're in Nazi Germany.
Uh, what do you mean they're gonna be giving up their honey buns? Those honey buns, you mean? Uh, are you trying to say that if these people were to be arrested and sent to prison, that they are going to be violently assaulted and be forced upon? Because that is a very disturbing thing to say. And they're not saying the fact that you're making references to Nazi Germany, that that's wrong. I mean, a lot of people have done that in political speeches. But what you're implying is the fact that they are not doing as you wish makes you seem like this is Nazi Germany. But the real issue is that you are making these veiled threats and these inflammatory claims that are not true.
He used vulgar language repeatedly. Every fucking stupid thing you said. Um, yeah, firmly protected under the First Amendment. Um, you're super fucked. You're a savior pussy asses. You're going down for it. It's coming. You thought yesterday was a strong move. Like when you issued this, you thought that was a strong move? Anyway, let's see. What, what can I tell you? I'll be taking the honey buns, not giving them. Hey, and so whenever-
And here we go with more of these veiled threats about taking their honey buns. Now, you're saying you're the one who's gonna do it. All right, you're trying to argue that you're protected in the First Amendment to say this stuff. Well, you're not actually, because the First Amendment does protect you for using coarse language, but it does not protect you from using words that conduct itself into violence. It does not cover fighting words. Your words are threats at this point. You're saying that they're gonna go to prison and they're gonna be violated, or you're gonna be the one doing it? You're pulling the same moves that Lain Myers has pulled, the same moves that Otto the Watchdog and Eric Grant have pulled. And Eric Grant's doing twelve years.
Whenever I did the Freedom of Information Act regarding the, um, articulable facts for conducting their harassment citation, which still hasn't hit the docket, by the way, I imagine it got canceled before it even, um, got out of the police station. District staff has spent approximately four to six hours a day managing emails from Mr. Lufman and working to respond on his Freedom of Information Act request. He isn't, uh, so, so I can't submit Freedom of Information Act requests whenever I have a federal case going on? Good luck with that one. This is harassing and causing significant drain on resources. Yeah, you guys were the drain, huh? Um, oh, here's where it gets good. Mr. Lufman has repeatedly asserted that he is an army veteran. I am. I'm a retired veteran of four combat tours, thirty months, and twenty-seven in Iraq, three in Kosovo. The petitioners are unaware if he has access to firearms, but understands that he is, he is well-trained in jiu-jitsu. Well, I'm a blue belt. I wouldn't say well-trained. I suck at jiu-jitsu, but I'm better than you guys.
Well, at least he's being honest about one thing. Being a blue belt means you have at least a hundred hours of training on the mat in jiu-jitsu. It's just one step above a white belt. However, they are concerned because it seems like you're trying to weaponize your military history, your military background. I don't know if you were in the military. I'm not going to deny that until we see proof of it. But if you're trying to weaponize the fact that you were in the military to coerce them into cooperating with what you want, that's not a good look on you, my guy.
He, his threatening and aggressive behavior has caused significant concerns for Mr. Big Money Brad. He's so concerned. Petitioners did not enclose copies of videos or email correspondence because they wouldn't want the, um, oh, because it's confidential. It's confidential. That's why they didn't put it in here. Well, guess what? I put it in all my federal filings. We're gonna see if it's confidential or not. In addition, the relief requested in the petition, Freedom of Information Act, he want, they want me to be permitted or prohibited from submitting Freedom of Information Act requests.
Everything that guy just says is bullshit. Thank you.
Yep, yep. So, y'all, I love that. That's your, uh, that's your tax dollars hard at work. Yep, yep. That's your hard, hard-earned tax dollars you're paying for them to build a case against me where they are trying to cite the fact that I'm a veteran and that I'm proud of it. But here's where I come in. I came in and said, um, unconstitutional. Plaintiff independent news media, which is Jeffrey TV that you're watching now, is protected under freedom of press, freedom of assembly, freedom of petition of government. We just start with the First Amendment right around here. Um, and then we got a little anti-slap laws, seven thirty-five ILCS, uh, one-ten violations due to retaliatory actions. So let's go into the Second Amendment where they tried to deprive me of my right to bear arms.
No, 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 they didn't.
Boom, look at that. You can't deprive this. Look at that. You can't deprive that. Due process, unreasonable vague restrictions keeping me a hundred feet away, weaponizing a veteran status. Improper veteran status, proud veteran and warrior, his references in dependent TV show, content unfairly portrays plaintiff as threatening. Um, we got a little Packing Ham versus New, uh, North Carolina for some case law. Um, pointing out viewpoint discrimination, um, misuse of Illinois eavesdropping statute that I can record public officials when there's no expectation of privacy, ACLU versus Alvarez.
Yes, you can film them when there's no expectation of privacy in a public meeting or outside in public. But when you're trying to pull a DMA and wearing spy glasses with a hidden camera, which you were called out on in the trespassing video that you ordered on Amazon for like twenty bucks, yeah. When you're recording somebody without their knowledge, then that can be considered wiretapping.
Um, interference with parental rights, seven fifty ILCS five slash six oh seven point six. When Big Money Brad issued me a communication plan. Yeah, of course. Sure did. Um, Dana Bond signing off on this, um, order. How, what's the right amount of money to ask for, um, the court to help us as, as a citizen? Miss Pants, Mr. Pants, well, you tell me, what's the right amount of money for a citizen to make? For, for a citizen to go in there and say, I need some help. This is big. Oh, it's gotta be below the poverty line? I'll let you know how that turns out, because there's other factors there, big money. There's other factors that go into it, and it's not just how much you make a month. It's the complexity of your case. And if you are disabled, which I am. You wanna talk about disabilities? They already denied me. Well, cool. Let's go.
And we're gonna end it here, folks. I know this was a long video, but the remainder of the livestream was him just thanking people that they were there, and he was going to continue on with this lawsuit. Typical frauder nonsense. So if you guys liked this video, please like, share, and subscribe. Give a thumbs up and a comment because it helps me with the algorithm. Don't forget to check out my second channel and the podcast. With all that being said, be well, be safe, and I will see you guys next time. And a special thank you to all members of the news team. Without all of your support, we couldn't keep this channel going. Just want to thank you all personally from the bottom of my heart. You guys mean the world to me, and I can never thank you enough for all the encouragement you guys give.